While it's quiet, I might as well test my mic.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Study session to order. Due to the Governor's proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda item. Council President Hunt will also share a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda item. I will now take roll call of the council members in attendance. Please say here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle?
Here.
Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Council President Hunt?
Here.
Deputy Council President Ray?
There.
Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
The first item on the agenda is public comment. If there is anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments, but is, but did not sign up. Well, first I'll ask if anyone is signed up this evening?
No, and in fact, I don't see that any members of the public are, have joined us tonight at the meeting.
All right, I will wait a moment to do a second call, just in case anybody joins us. No? Third and final call, anyone join us? No. All right, as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to city council@isiquawawa.gov. Council President Hunt, would you like to summarize any email comments received this evening?
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. We did receive one email on this topic, and during our virtual meetings, I've been summarizing written comments that council has received on topics that we're discussing. This comment that we received had a list of questions that were answered by staff regarding tonight's presentation, and that concludes the comments that we received by email on this topic.
Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda, we have ID 0775, Facilities Assessment, Draft Evaluation Criteria and Surplus Policy. And presenting this evening will be Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Services Director, and Jean Paul Management Analyst. There will be a staff presentation, council Q and A, additional opportunity for public comment, and then council direction. With that, I will hand things over to Jeff Watling.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Good evening, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to discuss. I'm going to provide a quick introduction of the topic tonight, and then I hand it over to Jean for additional presentation. So in regards to this item, in recent years, the city has, has been focusing some of our Facility Division resources towards updating our assessment of city buildings. Also, in recent years, there's been some discussion that's taken place in regards to possible surplusing of city-owned real property, real, real property defined as land or buildings. I think all of us on the call understand that when pursuing surplusing real public property, that can, that can become a pretty complex endeavor. Some of the work that we've done and questions we've posed as staff is what tools do we want to have in place to create a more standard approach and to assist with the consideration of surplusing property in that process in a, in a transparent way that the public can follow. The focus tonight is really on some draft tools that we as staff are recommending and want to present to you all, council, here initially tonight for your consideration. These tools would go a long ways towards assisting in any sort of future surplusing process. This first tool that you'll, you'll see tonight in, in the agenda item, as well as the presentation Jean will provide, is an evaluation criteria and a method to determine if an identified parcel or a building should be a candidate for surplus. This will be a series of questions that we, and criteria that we would use as evaluation. The second draft, and the second tool you'll see tonight, and, and we'd love some feedback on, is an actual draft surplus policy that would set forth the process that the city would take if considering and pursuing surplus. Jean and I again are here. We've worked along with Andrea Schneider and Rick Patterson from the Facilities Division on these draft materials. I'll turn it over now to Jean to provide an overview of the research we've done, the development of these drafts, and the drafts themselves. So Jean, take it away.
Thank you, Jeff, and good evening, members of the council. I'm Jean Paul, Management Analyst from the Executive Office, and I'll be continuing the presentation this evening.
Please proceed.
Just bear with me as I get my notes backed up. Thank you. Okay, the purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide the administration's proposed surplus property policy and receive your feedback on four questions. Overall, we're hoping to confirm the city council's desire for an approved policy, obtain the council's direction on the criteria for both evaluation and public hearings, and finally, the overall level of detail in the policy. As Director Watling already provided some background, the facilities inventory was begun in 2019 on 18 city properties. And while we're not looking to discuss those specific properties this evening, it is the reason that we are presenting this policy this evening. In terms of existing policies, the city's adopted financial management policy has a small section that addresses surplus property. Essentially, any real property will be surplus by a city council resolution, but it does not describe the process in any more detail. To create a more specific and robust process, the administration researched cities that have policies to identify their best practices. We found eight cities that have a relevant version of such a policy. We also saw a broad spectrum of both level of detail in those policies and the legislative vehicle for approving it. The administration did identify common elements from this research, and from those elements, we've drafted our proposal. Here's an overview. The process would be initiated at either the administration's or the city council's request. Following the initiation is the administration's review. During this phase, the details of a property are inventoried and then used by staff to get an understanding of the property. During this process, staff would use the draft evaluation criteria that I'll go into more detail about on a later slide. After evaluating the property with the standardized criteria, staff would generate a recommendation for the city council. The next phase is the city council review. This would consist of a public hearing, if necessary, and the council determination that would be captured in a resolution. Again, I'll provide more detail on this phase in later slides, but wanted to provide a general overview here. In terms of the administration's approach to this policy, the desire was to keep it at a high level and flexible. Our recommendation is to have standard operating procedures for the administration review phase. The policy approved by the council would summarize the administration phase and delineate the council phase in more detail. This method would not require city council action for staff to update their administrative procedures, but still provides the framework of a formal policy. Evaluation criteria from the administration's review is one area where we are looking for your feedback. These were developed by reviewing the processes performed by other cities and compiling the best practices. Overall, there are four groups of questions that help staff understand the property being reviewed and arrive at a final recommendation. The packet contains a detailed version of the draft, but I'll summarize those four groups of questions here. The first question asks whether the intended public use of the property at the time of acquisition is still relevant to the city's priorities and adopted plans. The second group of questions addresses the property's current use, the public benefits of that use, and whether that aligns with the intended use at acquisition. The third group of questions address the current condition of the property, the cost to maintain it, and future capital costs, and any revenue generated by the property. Finally, the fourth set of questions determines if there are other uses for the property or restrictions upon use that could impact how the administration may arrive at a recommendation. Ultimately, the administration would use these four criteria to recommend one of three options for the city council: retain the property and continue with current use, retain the property and transition to a new public use, or consider the property for surplus. Any property recommended for surplus would come to the city council for review and final decision. The first step in the proposed process is to conduct a public hearing. There are two situations where a public hearing is required by state law. Those two are the intergovernmental transfer of property valued at more than $50,000 and the sale of property originally acquired by a public utility. For other situations, public hearings are not required. However, the administration's recommending that public hearings be held for any property with an assessed value greater than $50,000. The administration's also recommending that public notice be published in the newspaper and provided to all property owners within 500 feet or to 20 property owners, whichever is greater. Overall, these notice parameters land in between the current version of Title 18 and what some other cities have instituted. The recommendations are based on what the Community Planning and Development Department are proposing for the Title 18 update, and they also balance the staffing time and cost considerations with the need for public notification. Based on the information from the administration and the public hearing, the process concludes with the city council making a series of decisions around whether to declare a property to be surplus, to retain or dispose of it, and if disposed of, how to carry that out. The council would complete this process by approving a resolution. Overall, there are a number of options for the city council when it comes to this policy. Those include deciding not to create a more formal policy, proposing alternative criteria for evaluation or public hearings, or including more details and other aspects of the policy. In terms of timing and next steps, the administration will incorporate your feedback tonight and plans to return later in the second quarter with a final version of the policy. The administration intends to plan and evaluate the long-term needs for city facilities next year, and based on that long-range planning, applying the surplus policy to city properties would occur in 2023. This is the final slide of the presentation, and it reiterates the four questions where we're seeking the city council's direction this evening. Those questions are: Is the council's desire to have an approved policy? Do the evaluation criteria reflect the information needed? Are the criteria for public hearings acceptable? And does the policy have an appropriate amount of detail? That includes the presentation, and Director Watling and I are happy to answer any questions.
All right, looking to see who wants to ask questions. I'll lead, since I don't see any questions yet. Oh, no, Councilmember Hall.
I'll lead. This is Councilmember Hall. Thank you very much, Councilmember Martz. I do have a couple questions. My first set of questions have to do with public hearings. So my first question is, how did we wind up, or how did we end up at this? Any property with assessed value of greater than $50,000? And is that just because that's the same amount that's listed in, in RCW and in code? And if there are any drawbacks to not just having public hearings for all, sale of surplus property? I would be interested in hearing that. And then finally, within this realm of public hearings, it says must be published in a local newspaper. Are we actually posting that in a local newspaper, or is it our approved paper of record for the city, which I think might be the Seattle Times?
Did you get all those questions?
Sure, in between Director Watling or I, who would you like to respond to those?
Director Watling, you want to start?
Sure, you bet. Yeah, thanks for that, Councilmember Hall. Yeah, in terms of, of the 50,000, yeah, that's a number that's consistent with RCW, and I think as, as Jean looked at other cities, that, that's a fairly standard number. To your point of, boy, if council wanted to consider a policy that just said any and all, real property would need a public hearing, that's certainly an option as well. I, I think what we would find with most of the assets we own, I don't know that we own too much real property. Quite frankly, that's less than $50,000. So, yeah, that's, that's council, council discretion there. In terms of the second question of, of public notice, I might call a friend in terms of the clerk's office. I, I know that we're required to still provide notice for paper of record. And you're right, I think our local paper is, I believe, the Seattle Times, Tisha?
Yes, we designated the Seattle Times as our newspaper of record until the Isiqua reporter resumes a print publication.
But as I understand, nothing would prevent us from doing other forms of, of notice as well, whether we wanted to, you know, put something out on our, our website, or social media, or, or something like that.
And then, Mr. Paul, do you have other comments to add to the questions that were asked?
No, I think Director Watling covered everything unless Councilmember Hall felt like we missed one of them.
Councilmember Hall is giving us the thumbs up, so I will move on to Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. This is Chris Ray. Couple of questions. At the beginning of the presentation, Director Watling referenced real property as being land or indoor buildings that the city owns. And yet, when I look at the policy, it talks about title vehicles, and it talks about other properties. So I'm just, I just need some clarity on scope of what we're talking about here. That's my, I have a couple others too, but that's my first one.
Jump ball.
Jump ball. Jean, do you want to, I know you're, as you drafted the surplus policy, you want to, you want to speak to that?
Yes, and I essentially borrowed a definition of real property from another city. So if the intent is to limit it to just land and buildings, we can certainly amend it. But that was just kind of a, a definition I found another city used.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're up for a direction on what, what the scope of the, of the policy should be. Great. So we can come back to that more when we get to the next section. When we talk about notification of property owners within 50 or 500 feet or, or 20, whichever is greater, so if we have more than 20 people who own property within 500 feet, how do we pick the 20?
It would be whoever's within the 500 feet, Councilmember Ray. So if there are 50 people inside of 500 feet, we would notify all 50.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just had a less than, greater than problem. Thank you. So my second question then is, if we have a property within 500 feet that is, let's say it's an apartment complex with, with rental units, would we reach out to the tenants there or just to the property owner?
Our intent would be to notify and communicate with both the owner and tenant.
Great, thank you.
Deputy Council President Ray, do you have any other questions at this time?
Not at this time, thank you.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Thanks, I think Councilmember Walsh was ahead of me.
But the clerk's office indicated that you had a question before Councilmember Walsh raised her hand.
Okay, I'll go, I'll go next then. I actually was just following up. I had to send an email to Communications Director Autumn Monahan regarding the notification as well. And her response was that we can certainly exceed our noticing requirements to include social media, formal public hearing notice is the agency's newspaper of record. The newspaper of record is not required to be a local paper, but rather a newspaper of general circulation in the area where the action is located. So we would be able to add social media to that list if we wanted to. And she clarified what kind of local paper would be used. So I just wanted to share that because I don't believe the answer went back to the rest of the council, so.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. I want to get into a little bit more on what would initiate this review, because the, the section in there on initiation 6.1 just says it may be initiated by a request from either the administration or the city council. So I'm wondering what, what would cause the administration to choose to go through a review of something like that? I know in the past, we've had requests from people who wanted to purchase a set of property that has initiated the conversation, but I'm wondering if there are any criteria that the administration would use to determine whether a, an outside request or an idea, you know, comes to a certain point of merit before it gets brought to us? That's my first question.
Another jump ball.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a first crack at this. I, I saw Wally popped on as well, City Administrator Bob Kowitz. Yeah, Councilmember Walsh, I, this not, that's not intended to be a prescriptive set of steps it would need to take. I, I think it's really intended to understand that at times, administration might want to consider a new use or reuse or a surplusing of property. And at the same time, council, through conversations or deliberations or discussion, might want to consider that as well. This is really just meant to be some tools that regardless of whether that starts within administration or within council, the same, the same steps would, would be taken.
You had another question, Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, and I'll come back to that when we go into conversation. My cat would love to say a few words here, sorry about that. In the section number three about the current condition of the property and facility, goodness gracious, cat. Hello, everyone, I'm a cat. It talks about some of the anticipated capital reinvestment needs, but I'm not seeing anything about the lost costs or the lost revenue that we have from holding a property versus it being used for another use, including the tax revenue, the property tax revenue, and then also any sales tax revenue. I wonder if there's a way, is there any consideration of that that you've seen in any other evaluations from any of the other cities? Or is it something we've considered?
Certainly, I, I think your question is a good one in terms of really exploring the financials of, of retaining, holding, and/or surplusing. You know, these questions aren't meant to be all-inclusive. I, I think depending on the circumstance, the intent of that property, is it, is it commercial property that we're intending to, to, to generate a profit from? Is it a, a park property that maybe isn't necessarily intended to, to generate revenue, but has another public value? I think what we're trying to identify here is, is really exploring the financials of that consideration. So I guess it's a great question. Maybe there's a way we can, you know, reframe the questions or make it a broader set of questions that takes into account the different financial circumstances that may exist with different properties that we own.
All right, giving a thumbs up. I don't see any other questions at the moment, so I'll ask a couple. We earlier to see, earlier today, received a one-pager that showed properties that would be potentially evaluated in this policy. I had a, first of my two questions is, I didn't see Tibbetts Valley Manor, and I didn't see Pickering Barn. How do either of those fit into the system? Director Watling?
Yeah, thanks for the question. First off, I, you know, the, the list that was provided to you, it correlates with the assessment, the facility assessment work that was done, that was started in 2019. The, it's not meant to be an all-inclusive list of every single city facility that, that is owned. So I, I wouldn't want it to feel like it's somehow it. Those happen to be the properties that the city either was not directly utilizing, or at the time in 2019, City Hall Northwest, if you recall, we were endeavoring a pretty significant assessment of sort of the current condition of, of City Hall Northwest. Since that time that report was done, as you all know, through COVID and having to rethink our business plan, the Tibbetts Creek Manor is now a city that we're not operating out of. We have removed all of our operating budget and cost out of that facility. So the Manor wasn't there because at the time, it was a facility that we were operating a, a, a direct city operation out of. That's why the barn is not on that list, but again, it's not meant to be an, an all-inclusive list of, of city facilities.
Thank you. The second question that I had revolves around timeline. You've got that you would start this process next year. Why wait? Why not start it sooner? We have a hearty eight and a half months left in the year.
I'll happily take that one, Councilmember Martz. As we look at the work plan moving forward for the balance of the year, we don't feel that we have those resources. Any excess facility resources we have are really focused right now on bringing our office staff back to work. And as we try to do this in a way that will not reopen City Hall Northwest because of the longstanding issues in that building, we don't believe that we have the staff capacity during '21 to work on the project.
Okay, I asked because there was, the last time we discussed City Hall Northwest, a certain urgency about resolution of City Hall Northwest, and I'm not necessarily seeing that resolution in this timeline, or that urgency in this timeline.
Well, I, I think, I think what we're trying to do, and we're going to come back to the council in a few weeks with a, an update of our return to office plan, is we're trying to vacate that building with existing facilities. And so we're still working on that. We're hopeful we may have a plan using existing facilities that will allow us to vacate the building. So I think the urgency remains. I think the tactic has just changed given COVID.
All right. If I could, if I could add something to, to that, the council, Councilmember, sorry, City Administrator Bob Kowitz shared. I think as we do that exploratory work with City Hall Northwest, some of our existing facilities may need to be utilized in interim basis, and, and that would include possible expiration of Tibbetts Valley Manor. Does that maybe play a role in, at least for a near term, being a, a space that could house staff?
All right, thank you for that explanation. Do we have other questions at this point? Councilmember De Michelle?
Thank you, this is Councilmember De Michelle. Looking at the map, I see a number of properties that, where we have relationships with tenants, like At Work and Gibson Hall, and just Gibson Hall just comes to mind. And the Depot with the Historic Museum and so forth. And yet, in the policy, I'm not seeing, I, I understand that we would do an assessment of the current use, but I wonder if we want to pull out or lift up the idea of working with current agreements that we have on particular properties that we might be considering selling?
Again, the, the list of 18 properties, Councilmember De Michelle, it's great. The intent of that was not to consider all of them for surplus. Your comment is absolutely right. Part of this facility assessment was understanding, we have a lot of lease agreements that look very different from one another. And so one of the intents of that 2019 work was to sort of compilate all of those lease agreements under the criteria checklist. Under the criteria checklist, under, I think it's category two use, it's really intended to explore that very thing. How is the building currently being used? Does it have a lease, does it have a tenant? Does it have a lease agreement? What's the term of that lease agreement? What's the public value that's being attained through that partnership or through that lease agreement with the tenant, in this case, you know, a nonprofit? So absolutely, those relationships and that current use by a nonprofit partner would very much need to be and desire from administration to be a consideration in any sort of property evaluation.
Does that answer? Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. This is Chris Ray. And if you guys already answered this question, just tell me that I missed it. But I'm looking at the draft policy, Section 6 and 6.0, procedures for determining the property as surplus. And it says, "According to the city's adopted financial management policy, title vehicles, real property, and any city property with a value greater than $5,000 will be surplus by the city council by resolution. The following procedures will define that process." So when I read that, it sounds to me like this applies to anything that we choose to surplus with a value of greater than $5,000. So if it's a vehicle, or if it's, you know, a backhoe, or if it's Tibbetts Valley Manor. Am I misreading that, or am I missing something? Or did you already answer that and I spaced on it?
I can take that one. Deputy Council President, no, we have not answered that question. And I think it's an area where I could clarify that this is intended only to apply to the real property component of that statement. I referenced that statement just as, that's the existing policy. So really, I'll clarify that to ensure that it applies only to the real property component of that.
And then if I go back to Section 4, where it's got definitions, so it's that definition of real property. So it could be a building, it could be a parcel of land that we own, it could be a fence, what have you. Okay.
Yes, that's our intent. And if you would like to, you know, change that definition or, you know, limit it, that's something we're obviously looking to understand.
Yeah, and it's, well, I have two real drivers here. One is, I'm trying to understand what the problem is we're trying to solve. I'm going to channel my inner Councilmember Goodman to really try and figure this out. But it says, you know, it's buildings, it's structures, it's fixtures, it's fences. And I know that this is, you know, very likely lifted from, you know, kind of a standard definition. But I just want to make sure that we are, you know, are we talking about surplusing, you know, the kitchen equipment that's, I'm not going to pick on Tibbetts Valley Manor, but the kitchen equipment in Tibbetts Valley Manor, because that would be fixtures. And so I just want to make sure that we're really clear on scope of this before we get too far into it.
I have a response to that, Councilmember Ray. I think it's a good question. I think in terms of what's the problem here, I guess as administration, what we're suggesting is, thankfully, there's not a problem. I think as we, what we want to have a discussion about is, if we in the future are going to go down the road of considering surplusing real property, here's some tools that we might want to have in place before we go down that road. I think to your question of definitions, that's a really good one, and we should clarify. And I think the intent of the definition of real property is not any piece of kitchen equipment. It's the land or the building, and then any fixtures within that building would be considered as well. So we can clarify that definition as well. But thankfully, we're not coming to you with a problem. I think we're coming to you with suggested tools that we might want to consider before going down a pretty significant public policy decision like surplusing real property.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Also in that Section 6.0, it basically says, "In accordance with the financial management policy, blah, 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 any city property with a value greater than $5,000 will be surplus by the city by resolution." That almost suggests that, is that more of a shall statement than a can statement? Will be surplus rather than can be considered? Of course, I don't know what surplus as a verb necessarily means, whether it's the consideration of or the sale of. I just want to make sure we're not committing to, you know, surplusing everything that we're just considering.
I think as Jean mentioned earlier, that language was pulled directly from the financial policies and probably deserves some clarification and context. Yep.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I guess I just wanted to weigh in on this. We keep referring to real property as being land or buildings or fences. And real property is an actual legal term. As a, there's two types of property, real and personal. Real property with this definition here seems to be the right legal definition that probably everybody in the United States uses, which is, means fee-owned land and the appurtenances to that land. So it's everything that's on the land. It doesn't mean that if there's a fence, that the fence is considered real property. So real property is the land. The house that's on the land is part of that real property. So I just wanted to make it clear that we're not talking about surplusing a fence as part of a real property process. And in terms of the other stuff that's not clear, what Councilmember Walsh was talking about, that's just a wordsmithing thing. It should be, any city property that's going to be surplus with a greater value greater of $5,000, shall be done by council resolution. You just need to switch the words around. That's all. Thanks.
So I actually have, Councilmember Goodman's question made me think of a question. Referring to real property being the land and the buildings on the land, do we have consideration for the possibility of preserving a building if not the land? If we had interest in potentially moving a historic structure, would that be something that we would consider? Because some of these parcels, I believe, would potentially qualify as historically significant buildings that we might want to move to a different location. Is that considered, or is that intended to be part of the consideration in this process? Council, Director Watley?
Great question. I don't know if that specific scenario is really intended in this document. It's certainly not, this isn't intended to prevent something like that. If there's interest in salvaging a structure or salvaging a building and offering that up to be moved because the property, the land itself, might be used for a different purpose, that, this wouldn't be, there's not an intent in this to prevent something like that from happening.
All right. Thank you. Other questions before we move into checking on public comment and then on to council direction? No other questions? All right. I will ask Council President Hunt if we received public comment particular to this agenda bill?
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. We did, and that was that email that I had referred to earlier. So we only received the one email regarding the list of questions about this topic.
All right. Thank you. So at this point, we'll move into council direction. And Director Watley, I want to make sure you're looking for general feedback that would go into the crafting of the bill that you would bring before full council and regular business. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be terrific.
All right. And first out of the gate is Councilmember Goodman. Comment. You, it says you've got comment?
That was my last one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had like comment, I thought that was part of the new.
Nope. Sorry.
My bad. Do, so we've had questions. Does anyone want to provide comment or feedback or discuss amongst ourselves? And the line queues up. Councilmember Walsh?
I'll start off the queue along with my cat, apparently. I don't feel like there's enough related to cost and the financial impacts, both pro and con here. I would like to see more in the consideration of that, including kind of the tax value and the tax-deferred value, as well as more about the maintenance cost. So something that looks at the cost and the benefit from a financial standpoint, I think, is important. I'd like to see another way to, goodness, cat, like to see another way to really take a look at the public benefit and understand who the current users are, maybe take an equity lens towards some of those ideas as well, and understand not just what the public benefit is, but who the beneficiaries, I guess, are. And then I also completely just lost my train of thought, and I will have to come back to it. So I'll stop there.
We have the technology to come back to you. Council President Hunt?
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. This is Council President Hunt. Firstly, I think this is helpful. I also think it's helpful to be developing this policy at a time when we aren't in a crunch trying to make a decision on anything in particular. And so I appreciate that we have time to think through the process without actually having a decision at hand. I think there are probably some areas where the documents could be streamlined a little bit, just, you know, there was some wordsmithing earlier. But there's also, in the staff report, it basically lists the same things that are in the categories for the decision. So I think you could just put that, you know, that the staff report will contain all of the information in the categories the council needs to make a decision, for example. And then, other than that, I do like the idea of the equity, trying to incorporate an equity lens. And there was also a question from a community member regarding strategic acquisition. While I don't think we have a plan per se, we do have information in our, in different plans around acquisition. And so I think identifying where there are parts of our existing plans that have acquisition that could be relevant to the parcel that's being considered for surplus, that would be helpful. Just because I think if there's a plan to acquire something that is similar to something we're considering surplus, that would be good to identify. Thanks.
Certainly. Councilmember De Michele?
Thank you. This is Councilmember De Michele. On the public notification, I would very much like to add, I'm not suggesting that we remove the requirement to contact local newspapers, or I also think that we should notify property owners within 500 feet. And then in addition, I would add that we would use our social media outlets. And if we wanted to be particular, you know, the hard part about social media is, we don't know exactly what that's going to mean five years from now or 10 years from now. These things are changing. So we might want to specify something to the effect of the top three media outlets used by the city, or some wording to that effect. And I think right now, that would be Nextdoor, Twitter, and our email newsletter, but we don't know what that's going to be five years from now. So put some flexible wording in there about what type of social media we would be using. So I really think that we're just in such a volatile time when local newspapers are disappearing and no longer read by a lot of people, whereas people are using social media to get their news now. So I think that would be an important change.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Marts. This is Councilmember Hall. I just have a couple things, a couple comments I wanted to make. I haven't heard anything so far that I disagree with, though I would be interested in checking in with Autumn Monahan, who runs a lot of our social media presence, and see if that would be of benefit to the community to make these kinds of posts in social media. I was going to suggest that we, I think it would be of benefit to have a centralized place on our website for people to be able to visit if there's ever a sale of property. So I think it would make sense to add something about that. And then with regard to public hearings, I also think it makes sense to just hold a public hearing for any and all sale of surplus property. I don't really see any drawbacks to that, though I do welcome any other feedback from my colleagues here on council. And I guess the way I think about it is, all of these properties belong to the community, whether or not it's expensive or not. So that's kind of where I'm coming at from there. And all the other comments that were made, I support as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. In terms of the question about the problem we're trying to solve, I think the problem that we're trying to solve is that we are, we don't really have a process right now that we've followed. And over the last 25 years, things have just percolated up now and then, onesies at a time. So I think what this does is provide a very, provide a process that is very reasonable and it's not too onerous. I don't think we need to do any more to this to create, to create it, to create anything that would make it any more onerous. The one thing that we have in here that I really like is what I call the catch-all, which says consideration for other uses of the property, which is a very, a very broad statement. And that could even be a broader catch-all if we wanted to change uses to any other considerations that would be relevant. The part that we mentioned earlier about the financial, in 6.0, the financial management policy and the wordsmithing there, anything we can do to clean that up would be good. I'm not in favor of broadening the reach to include putting stuff out on social media. I think that that's overkill, and I'm not supportive of setting that type of precedent. Social media goes out to beyond our city borders, to the state borders, to the US, all over the world. And we've been critical before about wondering where comments come from for our local issues. I don't think that that's appropriate, that we send stuff out on social media, just because that tends to be where people are looking these days. If we had a tighter local grip on that, that would be one thing, but we don't. I don't really want to set that kind of precedent because it will be social media for everything, and I'm not really supportive of that. Hearings for all property? I'm not sure that the expense and the formality of that justifies all property. So I would like the administration to provide some feedback to us about the pros and cons of doing that. I would, I would be interested in that. But anyway, for the most part, I'm very supportive. I think this is a very, very reasonable approach, and it provides us a really good framework for considering these, this type of surplus issue in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. This is Chris Ray. I'm going to start at the bottom of the questions, and I think we, the policy has the correct amount of detail. I think there's just some cleanup, as we've talked about before. I think the criteria for holding a public hearing are correct. And I believe that Director Watley's earlier comment that there's very little property that we have that has a value of less than $50,000, and if it is, it's probably not warranting the expense of the, and formality, as Councilmember Goodman said, of the hearing. On the evaluation criteria, I think they're interesting. I think it would be very informative to take a recent surplus action that we've taken and run it through those evaluation criteria and see what the results of that were. So, you know, pick a recent surplus, I can think of a few that weren't vacations of right-of-way or streets. And so push those through the criteria and see what the answer comes out to be, and see if there's some things that you are considering in that, that didn't make the criteria list. And then finally, I'm fine with the policy. I don't, I haven't seen it be a big barrier to being successful, but I will believe that always best to be ahead of these decisions. So I'm supportive of creating a policy. I'm much more excited about seeing an asset management plan and a property management plan and where we're going with that, because that's, you know, that's the real meat of this question. So yeah, yay, go with the policy, but let's not do that at the expense of moving forward. yeah, yay, go with the policy, but let's, let's not do that at the expense of moving forward with what are we doing with our real assets. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. I will add that I think we should explicitly call out evaluation of historic structures and historic landmarks with the possibility of preserving a structure, not that we necessarily will, but you know, we should understand when it is a historic structure. And I'm thinking here specifically of the depot, the Hillstone Feed Store and the Town Hall Museum, which have all been designated as historic landmarks in the city. And to have a, have a conversation about the possibility of preserving those. I think there were structures at Confluence Park that we got pretty far into that conversation and then started saying, well, maybe we want to preserve some of those structures. And it kind of happened too late in the conversation, I think. So other questions, comments, feedback for the administration? I am not seeing any. Call one more time. Ooh, all right. With that, we will close out this item. And I believe that closes out the study session. Oh, for good of the order. Does anyone have anything for the good of the order? Please note in the chat section if you have for good of the order. No? All right. Well, we have in seven minutes, we have a special session starting at 7:30. So I, so I will adjourn this meeting at 7:23. The special meeting will convene at 7:30 under the leadership of Council President Hunt. We'll see you in seven minutes.
Proceed to move, um, oh, just give me a moment to move to.
Thank you for your patience. We will now begin the recording. Please look forward to our next call.
We'll be ready.
Thank you. We are back in open session at 9:25 p.m. I will make a motion. I move to reverse the decision of the hearing examiner denying the preliminary plats to modify the decision to impose the city proposed conditions of approval dated August 10, 2020 and to adopt the vesting determination as set forth in staff report dated March 3, 2020 and to further direct the special city attorney to prepare findings of fact and conclusions of law consistent with this motion for adoption at the regular isiquoassity council meeting of April 19, 2021.
Seconded.
Thank you. That has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, the motion before council is to move to reverse the decision of the hearing examiner denying the preliminary plan to modify the decision to impose the city proposed conditions of approval dated August 10, 2020 and to adopt the vesting determination as set forth in staff report dated March 3, 2020 and to further direct the city attorney, the city special, special city attorney, apologies, to prepare findings of fact and conclusions of law consistent with this motion for adoption at the regular isiquoassity council meeting of April 19, 2021. City clerk, do I need to read that again because I misspoke on that one word?
No, I understood what the motion was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, clerk Eggers, if you could please take a roll call.
Thank you. Yes, we're going to begin with Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 9:27 p.m.